Yeah, that's a good idea. So at least you're listening.
Yeah.
We have a quorum.
Yeah, okay, so I'm going to call it to order. This is the regular meeting of the Town of Washington Brainboard. And we do have a quorum present. And we also have Andrew Spence on Zoom joined the meeting. So I'd like to start with the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To the republic which stands one nation under God indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The echo of that. Yeah, that's a good. Great echo there, Andrew.
Okay, good, you didn't have to repeat yourself.
Okay, so have the board members received the minutes from the October meeting?
Yes.
And were there any changes, comments, anything to that?
No.
No, okay, can I then have a motion to adopt those minutes?
They're moved.
And seconded?
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So we have three applications on the agenda tonight, one public hearing and two workshops. First up, we have a public hearing for an application by Orvis. Or is there anybody here? We're going to have to move to the second.
I think we can still have the public hearing, we can still hear from the public.
Yeah, but can we also switch so that we hear Rally Farms first? And then in case they're stuck in traffic, their representative, that's what I was thinking that.
Sure. I would just hate to not get it, you know, we can move it to the end, is that we're thinking of it to the end?
Move it to the end or at least move the next one up. And if they show up, then we can move them in. I just wouldn't want to, in case, so just because they're first up on the agenda, that's what I'm thinking. Okay. So the next matter on is a workshop for Rally Farm LLC. And they've submitted an application for two lot line adjustments.
Susan, I need to recuse myself.
Oh, yes, I have that. I'm marking that.
So I'm adjoining to Stallion Park 1704. Common moving. You are.
So Richard Phillips is recusing himself because his property abuts the Rally Farms property, correct?
On Stallion Park.
The Stallion Park property. So he's going to leave the room before the discussion.
He's one of these properties, he's not a party to this.
No, he is not a party, his property just abuts it. He's chosen to, I mean.
I think I.
It could be, it could definitely be viewed as a conflict, so better than.
I mean, if I started asking questions about it.
As a, as a.
As a direct neighbor, I, I think it could be a conflict. We have a quorum without you, so, but I think that it's up to each individual member to decide whether or not they want to refuse.
So Brian Houston, Lance Oberg, that prepared the plan here. And this is a proposed two lot line changes, both involving one piece of property. So out on Route 44, there's two people, there's one, a 253 acre parcel land owned by Rally Farm Two. And it's kind of behind where Charlotte's. That's basically comes out, this piece here is Charlotte, right here. Okay, and then there's a house that's for sale, that's right here. The driveway to get in to access the Rally Farm property is right here. So currently, everything you see in yellow here, that is the 253 acre piece, Rally Farm. What they're proposing to do in the first part of this lot line change, next door adjoining this is Stallion Park, which is an 80 meter piece of property. What they're looking to do is convey 15 acres, which is the field behind Charlotte's. And take that 15 acres and merge it in with the lands of Stallion Park over there. They needed, they were desirous of picking up some more agricultural land. And this is all a field and it adjoins their other working operation there, so it just made sense. And I think they are, I think they're the ones that farmed it this year already, they did all the planting and then. So that is part one of the lot line change. By doing that, the only road frontage that 253 acres has on the Route 44 is now going to Stallion Park. They have other frontage, or the, this parcel, the 253 acre goes from 44 all the way to North Tower Hill Road. So they do have other road frontage in fact. But they were desirous of keeping road frontage on the 253 acres. So hence we move on to the second part of the lot line change. The Rally Farm Two also has an adjoining vacant parcel land located next door. And that's what's outlined here in blue. What they're proposing to do is if they conveyed away their road frontage, they wanted to pick up 400 feet of road frontage that is required in our, our then district. And, and it will encompass the existing driveway that feeds all the Rally Farm land there. It's 9.84 acres, gonna take that, merge that into this piece of property. And that leaves the existing vacant property to bring it down to just a little bit more than 20 acres. And I believe Rally Farm, after losing the 15 and getting the nine, I think it's 248 acres. There's nothing being proposed as far as building, this is all agricultural land, it's gonna say agricultural land.
And the driveways are boosting.
The driveway's been, that's what served this piece for a long time.
And what goes on on this property?
Nothing, they, they farm it.
They farm it, and so how will they access it now?
So as part of the lot line change, they're proposing to do a common driveway that they would get access from this driveway, they would have access and obviously Rally Farm Two would have access.
They own this strip in here now.
Yes, it's, it's on the vacant piece now. Even though this had roof range over here, they've never used it. It's always been the access offered here, I don't know how long that driveway's been there, but I went back on the historic area, but you can see it in 1934, so it's, that has served this whole hillside there for a long time.
And they're not expanding the driveway at all?
No, that, this driveway, it turns into more of a farm lane once you get up a little bit further, but this is, this is gravel in through here so they can get their big equipment coming through. We're really just swapping some lanes.
Okay.
Stallion Park, part of this application?
Well, they're, yes, they'd be receiving the 15 acres of it.
Right, and then receiving it as part of the application.
You mean, are they an applicant?
Yeah.
Yep.
I believe they were.
Wouldn't they have to be?
Yes.
Because they're a lot more extreme and also.
Yeah, true.
You actually submitted two applications.
I did.
Makes sense.
And you're representing both?
Yes. Because this piece was conveying land and then picking up land, it just made sense to do it all on one map. Because otherwise yours.
Just, you know, I just wanted to be clear on the technicalities of the application.
Yeah. So I submitted an application for both, I broke them out. One for Stallion Park and then one for what was going on with Rally Farms.
We have to deal with each independently.
I don't know, I don't, in the end, we'd be approving the total application, right?
Right.
So I don't.
It's, it's the same way, sometimes you might do a subdivision and a lot line change at the same time on the same map. You're approving.
Which we've done all in one.
Right.
Yeah, many times.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah.
It's in the past, that's.
Yeah, you've got two owners endorsements, right, that are, that list you as a representative, I believe. I mean, they treated it as one application, it was one B, right, and one escrow set? And we've been reviewing it as kind of one. I think both owners have consented and seems fine.
Okay, you have any other comments?
Uh, sure, I'll call it to memo.
In this case, in the, in the past, we deferred a public hearing on something like this because it's a simple law change.
Right, on precedent, that's noted in my memo, usually, you don't usually treat lot line adjustments when they're not creating new lots, as subdivisions that require public hearing, so.
And no construction.
Right.
Right. So we get a privilege tonight and now.
Yeah, there's really, my comments are mostly procedural. We're not asking for any revisions to be made. The type two for seeker. Uh, we do know that there's wetlands on the property, but again, there's no development proposed, so. No county referral necessary. And yeah, well, nothing more to add. It was a confusing one to, to write up, so I'm glad you presented it. The way you did.
Yeah.
Thank you for being here.
It's easier to understand.
It's simple yet complicated.
Yeah.
Yes, because all three, four parcels are, uh, one, two, I guess three parcels are changing sides.
Yes, yeah, there's like a net result at the end because one of them is changing twice. So, yeah.
Right. Right.
Just giving up and, and, and getting some property. So I have a question for you.
Yeah.
So when we're doing a lot line change, I know in our code it says EAF. But I haven't, since the law change, I haven't been submitting any EAF. I know who says that, should I be?
Uh, technically, it's, it's a type two. So, and because you're not proposing development.
That's New York State says you don't have to do it, but I know.
My second comment is kind of pointing out this, is that you didn't submit that, and that historically, I mean, the board has the ability to waive requirements of submission, so in this case, they can waive the EAF type two it.
If you want one, I have one, and I did one, once I read it.
With a type two, with this simple thing, we don't need an EAF.
The EAF would just show us information that would not be relevant because you're not proposing to develop anything. So even if there was like, you know, if it's flagged for species or, you know, a wetland flag will probably show up without, without any plans to develop, it's not relevant to us at this point. The action at hand is a type two.
So we need to make a motion to waive the EAF. We need to make a motion to classify as a type two.
Yes.
And then we need a motion to, uh, we're, let's start at the top. Now, can we have a motion to waive the EAF for this application?
So moved.
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Great. So now I need a motion to declare this a type two environmental action for Seagrout.
So moved.
Seconded?
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
And now, has the board had a chance to review the, the resolution that Megan prepared?
Yes.
Approving this? Any comments, questions? Okay, can I get a motion to approve that, to adopt that resolution?
So moved.
Seconded, seconded? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Good. You're all set.
Well, record time. Thank you all.
Okay. So are you here on the Orvis matter?
No, he is another tiny.
Oh, wow.
I'm here to say hello.
Hi.
Ahead of time, but. Technology.
I'm sorry.
I'm Joe Ariel.
Joe, Susan Meany, nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you. I've been in the municipal office this time 25 years and just doing the firmies, so you may see my vaser, see my name on emails.
Thank you. Okay, so we're back to Orvis. Oh, yeah, Richard.
Richard.
We're saying you both have names, the last name and the first name. Could be first names or what. Okay, so.
Why is the EAF a long term?
So I guess the next matter is a public hearing for an application by Orvis for site plan approval for an addition to an existing building and expansion of their retail space. Uh, this application required the applicant to get a variance from the ZBA for an expansion of greater than 25% as well as a special permit from the ZBA to increase the non-conforming use. Both of those have been granted, conditioned on the applicant receiving site plan approval from us since expansion of a non-conforming building is subject to site plan approval. The ZBA served as lead agency for seeker and we and the CAC were identified as involved interested agencies. And in September, the ZBA adopted a negative declaration. So because of the property's location, the application was referred to the Dutchess County Department of Planning and Development, which has responded that this is a matter of local concern. At the last meeting, the applicant was asked to provide an erosion and sediment control plan, details of outdoor lighting fixtures, and also to correct signature blocks on their plan, they've done all of those and our consultants have found them satisfactory. So before we open the public hearings, I just wanted to ask if the board had any further concerns or comments about the application?
I did not. I don't either.
Okay. So since there was no one here representing the applicant, we're just going to open the public hearing. Can I get a motion to open the hearing? And seconded?
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So is there any member of the public have any comments or questions about this application?
CAC has a question about lighting, I heard you mention the lighting. We talked in about dark sky lighting. Uh, does it appear anywhere specifically on a plan where they're going to be? And will the other buildings that were never approved be required to have dark sky lighting now? It said now being approved 10 years after they were built?
I thought it was on the application, they put very detailed information on the, on the, I don't know, it was on a site plan, but.
It was on one of the plans.
It was on, it was on, I saw.
A diagram.
But I don't know about the previous buildings, the buildings that have pre-existed, I don't think that there is anything on there for the dark skylighting.
I think on this addition, it's just one porch light, like a residential type of porch light.
Would it be dark sky, right?
Yes.
Right, they submitted a spec of their light fixture. Like that, pretty basic.
Yes.
Yeah, that's the one I'm referring.
Yeah. So that's what we asked them to give us and it's confirmed it's dark side compliance. They're just proposing one outdoor picture right at like the entrance to that, to that new addition. No other lightings proposed, as far as that.
I have a question then, is since the other building was never officially approved, is it possible to say that when you're getting this approval? Or sometimes, sometimes a town finds people, they're getting away very easily with this building. Would we ask them to put dark sky lighting there as well?
I don't know whether they have, they could have dark skylighting, but I don't know, can we go back to, to them and, and require that on?
When was that addition done?
2012, 2014, so.
They.
Over 10, 10 years ago.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So you're not, your board isn't really considering the other addition, the ZBA had to, because technically they never got the special permit for increasing floor area over 25%. So the ZBA took care of like a retroactive kind of approval for that previous addition plus this one. But this addition is subject to site plan approval by this board, not the previous one, it wasn't really
Understood.
Um, carried over that way, so. I think, you know, all we're really focusing on is this proposed addition to the, to the building. Which they've satisfied all of our comments on, I don't know if the resolution, I didn't take a look at it yet, but if it talks about the.
It does talk, it talks about the ZBA.
Okay.
Of approval and it does mention the, um, expanding the size of the house with it, um, and the, well. It does mention the expansion in 2012, but it doesn't specifically state that. This board does not.
Because it's already built, like it, it wasn't something that we flagged as needing site plan.
Say anything about dark.
The resolution, no. Um, since I, I looked at the plans and I saw that they had provided it, I didn't include it as a condition.
Yeah. It, it was, it was on their plan.
Now, I'm satisfied with that, with what's on their plan.
I think we can let them know that it came up in the public hearing. It's something that I'm considering comes in consistent.
Yeah. So if there are no other, um, public comments, can I get a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Right, okay. So first, board needs to vote on whether the survey drawing which was submitted can serve as the site plan for this application, which I believe was discussed at the last meeting, but just thought it'd be cleaner to have a vote on it.
That's the one that, sounds like that.
Yep, yeah.
Color coded.
Signature blocks on it.
And I think all we asked them to do was to add the erosion piece, right?
So they, yeah, and they submitted a separate erosion sediment control plan that was prepared by an engineer and this looks more like an engineering drawing, it does have, um, two foot contours on it, Howard, I know you asked me that earlier. Um, that's, that's this.
Are you satisfied with that?
Yeah, I, I reviewed that and don't have any issues with what they're doing, the sill fencing.
Okay, so can I get a motion to allow that survey drawing to be used? All right.
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
Switching us up for the next meeting.
Okay.
Makes the minutes easier.
Does, actually, we should have a pattern. Um, so are we ready to vote on this application? Are there any other concerns, does the board have any?
I'm ready.
Ready?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, has the board, have the board members had a chance to review the, the approval that, that Megan drafted resolution, the resolution that Megan drafted and sent out?
Yes.
Okay. Um, can I get a motion to adopt that resolution?
So moved.
Okay, and seconded? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Yes, yes, it was. Okay.
I appreciate it.
All set with that one then? Yes, so is there anybody here on the South Road application? There is nobody, what's going on here?
Not a lot of people here.
Yeah, so there's nobody here and it's just a workshop, so. Um, that one, we're just gonna have to adjourn to the next meeting, I think. Okay. So the next thing we have on the agenda is a discussion of the wetlands law changes that we're proposing. And we worked on this as a result of last year, the town board and all of us have gotten together and said, look, let's look at the zoning code and everyone look at their own kind of sections that they work on and see where there are some issues. So this came up where I had highlighted some issues, Emily had highlighted some issues, and we came up with some draft changes. So the first, it's a little confusing because of what we sent out, we sent out a few versions and there's a little bit of confusion, but there aren't, there's no confusion within a few of the sections, they, they have not changed. Just that last section related to minor wetlands changes, there were some, some changes that Emily sent out and some that I, so we're going to discuss those. Well, the first thing is on, there was a clarification on the no reasonable alternative analysis. Where in the law, there's a, a section where it says that there, they, they, applicant would have to show that there's no reasonable alternative, which would not have, which would not, which would avoid the significant adverse impact of the, of whatever it is they're doing. But it reads sort of backwards, so we flipped it so that it says, but it really, really says, but you have to play with the words to understand that what, that's what it actually means, is that if, if there is a significant adverse impact, then they need to show that there's no other thing that they can do. So all we did was fix the language so that is clear and can be easily understood by applicants, by everyone.
And there was an application in the last yearish where I remember looking at that language and I, it was, yeah.
It was just.
I think it makes sense.
Poorly drafted, so I think, um, so the clarification, I think is very helpful on that one. Um, the next one, um, the idea of, of when a survey is required is, is confusing in the, um, sorry, I'm just trying to pull up the draft. Where all along, I was told, James Finley told me that, well, a survey wasn't really always required. But we've been requiring one. But it turns out, when you really look at the law, it wasn't in there as something that was always required. It was, there are a few different types of maps were required. And then a survey could potentially be required if it was needed. A full survey, a formal survey, they can use a survey to show us what it is, but that wasn't actually in the law. So we wanted to clarify that. Um, let me just find the language. If I can find the right section here, I'll show you this. That's this one, let me just get there. So.
Number six, I think it is.
The law says, um, that what is required on every application. And along with a written explanation of why you're doing it, or, uh, your name, or all of those things, is a map showing the wetlands and watercourses and water bodies within 200 feet of the location. And then a map at a scale, uh, greater, no, no greater than one inch equals 50 feet, containing contour intervals of five feet or less. And those maps can be taken from publicly available maps. There was no rule that they had to have a formal survey done to create those. And we wanted to make that clear, that, that, I, I spoke with Mike Murphy, who said he was on the, the drafting committee when this law was done, and he said they never thought about formal surveys except for more complicated applications and that they did think that you'd be able to use publicly available maps, so, um, so that, that was one of those things.
Do we expect these maps are consistent in terms of how they're showing wetlands? What if they're not?
There was a case where there was somebody who wanted to build a pool and they were using a, a map that had been developed years before, and then the neighbors got together and had an official survey and it showed.
Right, I think they're all so different, we had an experience, I think we had one map that didn't show wetlands and the one that did.
Yeah.
So what is, is there, can we expect there to be a standard?
I mean, I think, I think that part of the NRI is that there will be better maps available. But we don't stop with that map, that's a starting point. The idea would be, if you're doing something that's not terribly complicated, we want to incentivize people to come forward and not have to spend a whole lot of money on a proper survey when the map might, might be just fine, and if it's not, then we're going to ask for something else. So it could be at our discretion instead of making it a mandatory expense, putting a huge burden on.
And it absolutely is the way the law is originally phrased, that they come to us and then we can say these, all this whole other list of things that we can require from them. And certainly in a swimming pool anywhere near water, I think we, we are all going to be asking for a formal survey.
A spectrum of things that people come forward with, and that's a big, that's a financial burden if you're doing a small project to have to get a formal survey.
Survey and then the wetlands delineated, so that's another expense.
Yeah, exactly. I think that makes sense.
Okay.
As long as, you know, we have the discretion given the complexity of.
Exactly, and the law always had an additional information section of, of the other things that, that we could require. Uh, we cleaned up a little bit of language there, but, but we haven't done too much in that section except to add, actually say, a formal survey of the subject property is one of those things that could be added on which the property, the regulated activity is proposed. Um, and describing, again, the language was, was poorly drafted about when a field delineation was required and how, so we, we just cleaned that up a little bit. So the next section is really an addition, um, this idea of minor wetland permit. That there are, to incentivize people to come forward when they have a very minor thing that they would like to do. Where examples, I've spoken with James Finley about it, and examples he gave me were a shed where someone wants to put it just up on a couple of bricks and they want to have a very small shed. a shed where someone wants to put it just up on a couple of bricks and they want to have a very small shed. But if they have residential property that's built right next to a waterway and they, they just want to do that. Or a swing set without um, without, you know, not one of these elaborate crazy things I just saw on road around here that somebody put up, that's wild. That's a house, but not one of those, you know, something that is not um constructed into the ground to elaborately, that doesn't require big footings, s- small things. And I think we can make a list as a board, and a list that maybe can get updated as things come up, that we would allow people to go through a, a simple application where they're just coming to us, they have the way that we've drafted it is their name, the property address, a description of what they want to do, and a map that shows the wetlands thing, and they can describe to us where it is that they're going to do, whatever it is. And we can say oh, this is fine, that's nothing, we're not going to require a full wetlands application, or we can stop them right there and say it's a little more complicated than that, you're gonna have to submit a full application.
And, and Mr. Finley could advise them on that too before they even come.
Exactly.
Yeah.
Exactly.
And again, the, the idea is to make compliance easier and to have people coming to us um with more things without it being so onerous.
Yep.
Is there gonna be such a thing as a minor wetland permit, is that the wording?
Well.
Or app, to application.
Minor project application.
Yeah.
It would still be the same, they'd get the permit, but that's, it's the application that would be like a regular and then a minor. I think that's right.
I don't, I'm not wedded to any of that language, so we want to say minor application permit or, but I think we are creating kind of a separate permit, but.
Well, if we are, if there is gonna be such a thing as minor wetland permit, then it's fine, there is, it's gonna be one, shouldn't.
Yeah.
I mean, I'm, is there any reason why we shouldn't call it a minor wetland permit?
Um.
Or have like.
Well, in the, maybe you have a different draft than the one I sent down, but the way you have it in quotes is minor wetland permit, right?
Yeah.
In that number twelve?
Yes.
Um.
I mean, are we just approving a minor wetland application, in which case we don't need a.
I think you can it might make sense just to keep the wetland permit application process the way it is, right, but then you can determine it to be a minor project, in which case you don't require all the things that um.
It would act as sort of a waiver.
Correct, yeah, and you could, so they would still be submitting an application, still be submitting a fee for that application, right, and you still have to come before you. Um, but you could treat it as a minor activity because of what it is.
It's a minor project waiver. That'd be useful.
Might be more appropriate.
Yeah, you would be waiving the formal permitting process, but they would still be going through the application process. I don't think we've been thinking about it as a waiver, but instead as a, a different category entirely, which is just a minor application. You know, where some do you, could you, um, is your phone on mute? No muting, Leslie?
No.
She thinks she's on mute.
She's.
She's ready to make, are you getting these messages?
Very silenced?
Oh.
I hear you.
Turn it up.
Let me turn the volume up. Hi, yeah, you weren't silenced either.
I did, um, I thought it might have been on mute. I just had a couple of questions back on one of the things. I wanted to ask Erin in your experience, how other towns handle the survey question regarding the wetlands, requiring it or not?
Yeah, um, I think it depends on the situation. Um, if it's a pond where it's pretty clearly defined limits, you can see from an aerial, you can see from the D C database layers that that's the extent of the wet area. Um, might not necessarily need to send somebody out to do a delineation. If it's vague, if you can't really tell if the action has a lot of disturbance, um, you know, Steve Marino can weigh in and maybe you want to actually go out and flag it. I think it's gonna be on a case by case uh basis.
Updated, um, so I guess it'll be clear. If, if there's any question about how close something is to a wetlands, that would be that in a case where the planning board might want to get some, that might want to have a survey done.
Absolutely.
Yeah, if it's really close, if it doesn't seem to match up with what the aerial photo shows, it's, there's some, any kind of questioning. Sure, the board has the ability to say, well, you should go out and flag that and come back.
And then we're just making a comment, and I think you would have said the same thing, Erin, that just, I, I thought maybe we should leave the wetlands permit and then leave it have the person apply and then let the planning board or the building inspector maybe first, probably the planning board, because they'd have to see the map or something, just say that they don't need to pursue the permit. Because I think it'd be hard to decide that I'm being looked at, um.
I don't know if I agree with that. I think if they had, if we had a list of, of what is generally thought of as minor applications. I don't know that that would be, would be difficult to do, and again, we have the recourse to when they come before us to decide, well, no, this isn't actually minor, and then they will have to do a full application.
Okay, so they still have to come before you then?
Yes, oh, yeah, no, 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 this no, no, we're not, we're not getting rid of an application. This would just be that they submit less information to us, they probably come to us for one meeting and then based on, on if everything is as it appears, we could even approve it like that, as opposed to having somebody have to um have all sorts of, of maps drawn up, uh, pay the wetlands expert, all of that.
Okay, okay, that makes sense.
Yeah. I think we, we do have to think about what the fee structure for this would be though, whether that's going to be something different than.
Anything would have to be different.
Yeah, it, it should be different.
I mean, it's a really small list of things.
It is.
Which is why I think it, it might be best if it's actually a list. I know there's some disagreement about that, but we're talking about like a garden shed, a swing set, the gazebo. Things without foundations.
Such as?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Wouldn't have to be comprehensive.
That, that, yeah.
Including but not limited to.
Yeah. But that is, it's, the question is whether we put a defined list in the law or we do it as including but not limited to, or, or we say that the board can change a list from time to time. The board itself can come up with a list, which may be amended from time to time. Which is probably how I would do it.
I like that, but yeah, it sounds, then we don't have to debate the definitions of the lists.
Things come up, right?
Because I don't think you can think of every eventuality. Um, I think Emily has expressed a concern to me that, well, a board ten years from now might be loosey-goosey with that, but I, I don't know. I think I think we have the C A C to keep us on our toes on that.
Didn't you say including but not limited to, and they include some sort of parameters as to what you have based it on, like things without foundations?
A lot of disturbance.
Little structures.
Very limited disturbance of the gra, of the ground.
Exactly, that's, that's been in the list, that's been in the list. Minor disturbances. Emily, you like the list?
I like the list. No, I think, I mean, I don't think the list has to be exclusive, and I don't think it could be, right?
Right.
Because maybe we don't think of something particular that holds a canoe, I mean, whatever structure that is, but that's obviously what we're talking about. I think what I didn't like was the idea of expanding the board's power so expressly as to this issue, which is that's.
Right.
I think it's such a limited issue though, that for me, that, that wasn't troubling, that the board would be able to, but I don't.
I don't feel that strongly about it. My guess is these things are going on and we're just don't know, we don't know them.
Yes, well, that, I don't think.
Right, exactly.
I think that is a concern, and, and speaking with James Finley, you know, he said, you, basically you incentivize people to just not do, not follow the law. Because it's, for some, and people live on resident, I happen to live on too, that's near water that have been around for a while. If you live on residential property, that's where it's been there for a while. You know, you have to give people the ability to come and get a proper permit without spending five or ten thousand dollars, doing some small thing.
Yeah, and it helps us also know what they're going to do. Are, are they gonna store fertilizer in a garden shed sitting right next to, you know.
An area that can flood or something, yeah. You don't want you don't want that, you have to be careful. So it is a case by case thing.
I like the idea, and, and hopefully more people will come forward with things they're doing.
Yeah. So will we aim for a small list of a such as, which can be amended?
E G.
Okay, okay.
Maybe can, you can play with the language. I don't think we should try to include everything. We should just give examples so that people can understand where they fit.
I can understand the scale that we're talking about, that we.
And Steve Marino wanted us to make clear his comments were um, why allow the expansion of an already existing project? And that was a response to language that I had been there or minor expansion of a pre-existing such project. And that literally came from something that James Finley told me about, where somebody came to him and they had a little um patio, you know, off their house, and they wanted to expand it, I think, three feet on each side of make it a little bit bigger. And he told them what they'd have to do, and they, they just laughed, you know, they they couldn't believe that they would have to do that to get that.
Right.
So that's why I put in minor expansion of a pre-existing such project. You know, these, sometimes if people have been living in these homes for a long time, you have to, I think, give them some option to do small things.
Yes.
Um, and then he commented that it should be clear that this is in the buffer only. Not in the wetland water body or water course, but yeah, certainly we want that, and no earth movement. I'm not sure I would say no earth movement personally. Very limited earth movement, but you can't do anything if there's no earth movement. You're basically nullifying what you're trying to do. Um, no, no earth movement, tree clearing, drainage structures, et cetera, et cetera, should be allowed without the full permit. So I think we can put in some of that language and, and get what he, after what he wants, but without fully doing it. So. Okay.
I think we can, I, I, we can play with the language and come up with something that works. I mean, it sounds like everyone's on board with the general premise.
Hmm, yes.
Yep.
Then we have one other word sniffing issue.
Yeah.
Why don't you guys discuss that?
I had an idea. So the, the issue is that we use, in the wetlands law, there's a, a term used that is also used frequently in S I C A. And so there was a concern that it might be confusing whether we're talking about a requirement of the planning board or a separate S I C A requirement. So um, I looked at the law.
Hmm.
We actually define our term.
Yep.
I think if we just capitalize it, which should be already capitalized in the law, but it's not, and we make it clear that this is our defined term. Doesn't that solve the problem? I, I mean, I think then it's not so confusing because it's
Yes.
clearly.
So just for background.
Yeah.
Um. The whole point in S I C A is to, you know, if you identify a potential significant adverse impact, that's the, the term. Um, you have grounds to issue a positive declaration and have an applicant prepare an environmental impact statement. Go through a scoping process, the whole thing, it could take, you know, for one issue, it's a little overkill, especially if it's a wetland permit kind of application. So I just wanted to make it clear that we don't want to confuse that with with S I C A, because a lot of the time, when we get a wetlands permit application, we, it's a type two action under S I C A. It might have significant effect, there's a potential for significant effect on a wetland according to the wetlands law of the town, but not necessarily an issue for S I C A because of what the activity is. It might be a type two, it doesn't require any consideration at all. So I agree, yeah, we could have it, you could capitalize it, you could even, in the definition section, can we just add, maybe possibly this says this definition is separate from State Environmental Quality Review Act.
We can, I just want to be careful that we're not confusing the process because secret is part of our wetland application process.
Yeah.
And also because changing the law, the more we change, the harder it is, um. But yeah, I mean, we can play with the language.
But you have it defined, so.
It's defined, but you wouldn't know, but when it's not, it's not defined in secret.
Right, because it's.
So when we capitalize it, it is unclear. I think if we capitalize it, it'll, it's clear, but if we want to add something in the definition.
I like the capitalizing it, I think that really helps.
It should be.
About the attorney.
Um, so I think the capitalization is, I think ultimately we should take it out. But um, take, take one out.
The whole.
Language, the significant.
Yeah.
Adverse factor, environmental, now we're all together, just to avoid any confusion or potential challenges. Um, but capitalizing definitely could work. Um, if you're going to change the definitions, I would recommend also changing the definition for S I C A as well in the wetlands law, because it does state um, review of actions that may have a significant effect on the environment, so you kind of want to just stray away from the board making a determination of significance on a wetland application that could be perceived as making a determination of significance under S I C A. Because like Erin said, nine times out of ten, they're not going to be the same determination. And.
I never even thought about that. But we've been doing it though since twenty eleven. This law's been around since a long time and
what, what would you, yeah.
Go ahead.
Well, what, what would you use instead? What might you use instead? So looking at some other wetlands laws. Um. They use i- in the reverse and they say that the the wetlands expert makes the determination of insignificance. The planning board isn't making a determination, it is the wetlands consultants who are making the determination. Um, that is how I think that they get around it. Um, some other wetlands laws, they don't even say that, they just say there's no impact on the environment, this application, or it's not necessary, there's um you know, it's a, a minor application, things of that nature. Um, I, without changing the entire structure of it, which I don't think anybody really wants to do, I don't I don't know. Um, if you say something like insignificant, because the planning board is making a determination of insignificance, I think that brings it back to square one, where we're, you're still making a determination of significance, whether it's insignificant or significant. Um.
Doesn't this language say too different, that it has two, it says significant adverse impact, I'm looking for it.
And environmental impact or significant impact.
Does it say adverse?
Significant adverse effect or environmental impact, this is the definition. An activity that may substantially alter or impair the natural function or benefit of a regulated area. That's how we, that's how it's defined in the law. So, so one idea proposed is to say, you know, this is separate and apart from the me, you know, significant adverse effect under S I C A.
That, that troubles me though, because if you're saying something has a significant adverse effect, it has a significant adverse effect, like that's tricky.
But then you're.
I mean, just.
Yeah.
Then any opponent can say, well, you should make them do an E I S for this.
But you could say, this is not a secret definition, it's defined in our.
Why don't we, I mean, I have tried, and Emily has as well, in making our changes to keep them as small as possible because we didn't want to blow up this law.
Yeah.
And, oh, here's our new wetlands law. That was, we have.
Terms all over the place.
It is, I know.
Maybe we should just take it out and use the definitional thing. They have, why can't we say everywhere where it says that, substitute an activity that may substantially alter or impair, so you know, use that substance, just get rid of this.
Significant adverse.
Takes it out, oh, right, okay, we're done.
The fact that word for word.
Is troubling, yeah. So this just, we're not changing the law, and so when, in explaining this to the town board and in everybody else who will be looking at it, including the C A C. That'll be, okay.
The backgo back is reversed one too, where you start off taking, how the significant part, and then putting this in again.
Well, yeah, it'll be in all, it'll be all over where we're discussing that.
So instead of, instead of, instead of using the, the defined term, we're gonna say what the, the definition is, we're just gonna use the definition.
Yeah.
Which is hardly even longer than the defined term. That's what's funny about it. Yeah. We'll think, we'll, we'll get that in there, okay.
Good.
But this is good, it says an activity that may substantially alter or impair, it's good.
She did let him out. We approved your application. So I think you're all done. Good work.
Thank you all. Now, we, we were under the, uh, Danny was, was.
Thank you. Well, we, we were under the, I mean, Fanning, it was, it was a seven o'clock uh, public, uh, meeting.
We don't do seven, we're six.
It might have been originally some notice that went out for seven.
No, no, we don't, we don't have any meeting.
No, there, it was, there was. Remember, we did the corrected one.
Yeah.
But we did a corrected. No, I think it said seven.
Thank you so much.
I don't know, just move it out of a hat.
Do you want to ask about the way?
Sure, the one question that did come up was you, in response to comments from the board last month, you provided the dark sky lighting and the type of lighting that you're going to be using. Is that lighting consistent with the older buildings that, that are there? Do you have dark sky compliant lighting there?
I would say probably not. It's not, because it's not a process where we come through, though we have almost no outdoor lighting.
No.
You know, it's set, set quite far back off, off the road.
Mm-hmm.
And we have very, very few outdoor lights. Um, at all.
Okay, we, go ahead.
Go ahead.
I was just gonna say, we as a board encourage push, try to get people to use dark sky lighting wherever possible, because it's not just for your neighbors, it has to do with the wildlife and, and birds, and also we we ask that people try to, whenever they're changing lights, adding lights, to use dark sky compliance, so.
Our architect was coming, um, she's probably I'll go walk through the door in a few minutes. She's coming from Chicago. So, and it's definitely something that we, um, we take back as part of this work, and certainly where we have those lights that are on all night long, um, which I think would threaten me. One, two. One off the top of my head. Um, we can definitely make that in line with what you all.
That'd be great. We appreciate that.
And I know that, um, we've gotten the feedback as to what that lighting is as part of the previous three meetings. She's, she's in line with it. She'll, she'll make it. Sandy is her name, she'll make it.
Great.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
That's we're, we're all set? Thanks so much.
Good luck with it.
Thank you. Bye, your architect dinner.
So was there anything else we had on this? I think, I don't think so. I think we're gonna have to talk about what a fee to apply, um, and maybe
Reduced fee compared.
Some sort of a reduced fee. I'll make a note of it, I'll talk about it with. Exactly, they have to be compensated and they, and whoever else is involved. So we, I, I, let me look at the fee structure and, and for the next meeting, maybe we'll have an, an idea of what we're gonna.
Board will set that.
Exactly, I just want to make a recommendation, that's, that's all. Okay, um, so then we had one other item, which was, um, the same, in the same vein of coming up with a pre-application fee proposal again to go to the town board. So that we can meet with applicants who want to talk to us about something beforehand. Now, we wouldn't talk to them about, like, uh, the Ramble Hill, you remember Ramble Hill came to us? And it was decided that is not something we would meet with them about. And in that case, they were asking us to have a meeting to discuss what uses we might approve on the. And that's, that's beyond what we would discuss at a pre-application meeting, but being on this board for many years, we have, we used to all the time have applicants come in and kind of flesh out something with us, like a lot line change, or, and that's what we.
Like workshop.
A work, like a workshop. But before, before they filled in it, you know, signed an application and paid any money, and they would just kind of come, well, I'm thinking about switching this lot this way, or doing this small, or thinking about this house addition here, but I'm worried about the, and we would give tips, little, or little, you know, our thought process on that. And help people move to the next phase. But we don't have a way to do that now, because we have consultants, and they need to be paid for their time for any of these things. And also Megan is involved, and, and so we, we need to come up with some sort of a fee that we can charge people so that they can come and have these sorts of things. And not necessarily with all of us, because I've spoken with Aaron and Alicia and Megan, they said, and other municipalities, a lot of times what happens is that pre-application meeting might be between the chair and the consultant and the attorney, and they'd all sit with the person for half an hour, an hour, and flesh something out. So.
I, I will just say that my first thing that went in my head when you said that is I can understand the helpfulness to the community, but also I know that there, we've been making a big push to make everything public and transparent. And to avoid the chair of a board meeting with applicants on their own, because we're really trying to make everything upfront, above board, transparent and public.
Yeah.
Um, and my worry is that when one person from a board starts meeting with applicants it gives a bad perception to the public that there being deals that are being done. I don't like that.
I am less concerned, I understand that concern, but I'm less concerned where that is happening in the presence of the consultants and the attorney.
Right.
Than I would be, but I also don't like, I don't like that approach personally, because I think I might have an opinion or say something that is not exactly what the board would feel, and I would rather, I, I liked the approach that we had before all of this, two or three, four years ago, where people would come in and sit right here in front, you know, in the public on Zoom, we didn't have Zoom then, but in a public meeting, and tell us what it is they wanted to do, and we would give our opinions of, of whatever their question was.
And right now, we can't do that because there's no fee to cover the.
Exactly, exactly. And we don't want to leave the town paying for the.
Yeah. But do you want that, those discussions, if the level of granularity that we require the consultants? Couldn't it be more just sort of a general directional thing? And of course, tell them that you will always have to rely on your own counsel on your own consultants. But I mean, the board itself could show the people general ideas and corrections, the kind of things that but well, but they sort of preamble up. Nothing official there. I think that's, um, trouble. I think we should charge a fee, uh, and have a consultant on it.
I agree.
Because if I'm sitting at the table and, yeah, I mean, if we're sitting. And you, you look at me and say, what do you think?
Or we say something that's obviously wrong.
So we may mislead the applicant and then, you know.
And that would cost them even more money, because we misled them. Not intentionally, but, yeah, yeah.
Well, I, I think you also have the can of worms, it's someone now think, okay, I don't need a lawyer, I don't need a and generally any of these things to go to this meeting. So the questions you're gonna get, the assumptions, these means to go on.
Yeah.
In other towns that that we work in, like, if we have, we have this pre-application structure set up, or it's typically the chairman, the consultants, maybe the secretary on the line, or, you know, or we do them all by Zoom now, but, um, and they present what they have in mind, and a lot of the time, the outcome is you really should hire a professional engineer and, and an attorney to be on your team before you come into the board, because you have a lot of stuff here that's pretty complicated. Sometimes they just come in by themselves and they think they can do it without that. Um, and then we end up telling them, well, no, you're gonna need, you know, a survey, you're gonna need a site plan drawing. Um, you're gonna need an attorney that understands the code and how to talk to these boards.
The fee structure for that, that is, it's a reduced because it's a, a free for meeting with fewer people?
Yeah, it's, it's usually just covers like an hour of, of, of our time, pretty much. Um, and I know our rates change a little bit year to year, but, um.
And what do you call that?
It's like, it's a pre-application fee. It's really just a pre-application meeting, because, um, some towns have like an actual like request for a pre-application meeting form that you fill out, and then you pay the fee with that, and then it gets set up. Secretary sets it up.
And do you record that publicly that you have this pre-application meeting?
Um, maybe when they come in for the first time and we can disclose that we did meet this in a pre-application setting. We can remind them, hey, that pre-application meeting we had six months ago, we told you to do this, this, and this, it doesn't look like you did that, why?
I don't know if you'd have to do that.
I think, um, yeah, I, I think keeping it, even if they do the application and they and it's not, and they're, they go before all of you for a shorter they don't get, they only get a certain period of time, or whatever you all want to stretch it, I, I think it would be best to have it be with your whole board, um, than just the chair, um, is my perspective.
So if it's with the whole board, it needs to be a public meeting?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, exactly. I'm kind of in favor of that.
Me too.
I have no problem with that, and that's, again, like, like we did it before, it's just now we're pangs.
And it's not like we don't have time. I mean, right now, we have the capacity to do this.
We do.
Um, and we already have the people here once a month, are the experts, um. Like, couldn't we set a fee, like a pre-application fee, which is limited and allows a certain amount of time? And do it here.
And how would people access this, if it's part of the application process, they would now see that this is available?
Yes, on our website.
I can have this pre-meeting.
And or talk to the building inspector. You might be, exactly, he does a lot of this. But you might be, you know, your questions are beyond what I can answer. Maybe you want to have a pre-application meeting and you have to pay X and then go to, you know, talk to them. That could.
I think it would be good to have it be transparent. It's such a sensitive issue right now.
And perception is really important.
Yeah.
I think everything we should do should be public.
Yeah, I, I think, I'm, I'm in favor of that.
So they could come in and, you know, say they end up not going forward, like they don't end up actually submitting an application. Um, they had still paid that fee, it's in an escrow account, and then it gets
Right.
billed by us and it's not refunded.
Whatever doesn't get used up there.
It's non-refundable.
Yeah, the, this one would be, because this, we're not asking for, the other, we ask for a large escrow, and then we refund what's left over at the end, but this, we would be talking about something like five hundred dollars.
Right.
Makes sense. I wish it could just be like a repaired cafe at the library, but I guess it can't.
So we just recommend to the town board then that we have that option, that be whatever.
Yeah, do you think five hundred dollars would cover it in most cases? I mean, occasionally.
Hourly rates that going by mine, I, I think that works.
Okay. Okay.
And if it's a little bit over, we eat it, it's fine.
And I think they, they have to be prepared to pay five hundred dollars to have. Yeah.
And you're here, you're here anyway, so you've not, like, traveled for it, not gone to work for it, it's taking place in the time that's been.
So it's part of the regular monthly meeting?
Yes.
Every month.
Yes. I don't think we're gonna have a lot of these, I think you'll get one or two a year.
The building inspector screens this, it doesn't.
A lot of this is being built.
And it would have the same deadline.
Yes, because they'd have to be on the. Yes, in order to get on the agenda.
Right.
We have to, yeah. Okay. All right, um, it'll be okay. I think that's it, unless there's any other business, uh, does anybody have anything else? All right, can I get a motion to close the meeting? Eric, can I get a second?
Second.
All in favor? Thank you, good night.
Thanks, good night.
No problem.
For the next meeting, I will download.